By going to the Cumberland School Department calendar, where you'll find the link to the Zoom program to actually participate with video. And the passcode is two, four, seven, one, eight, three. Again, there you go with the school department calendar, click on the events and you'll find that link there to join this meeting that way. So the first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. So I'll start it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. All right. So item number A on the approval of the agenda and compliance with Governor's executive order. Twenty to sixty-three dated August seventh, twenty twenty. Discussion and or vote whether is meet, there is public access to the meeting. Via ultimate means, Mr. Chandler, there are, I see the public is on here.
Yes, they are.
So we are reaching that and I see Mrs. Waters has joined us. So I need a approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have it six to zero. Please note for the record that Mr. Salvatore is absent from this meeting at this time. Next is the consent agenda approval of the minutes. Item number one, regular meeting, regular meeting on July sixteenth, twenty twenty. Item number two, the special meeting on July twenty-first, twenty twenty. Item number three, the special meeting on August sixth, twenty twenty. And then we have the approval of the minutes from the executive session from July sixteenth, twenty twenty. The executive session on July twenty-first, twenty twenty. The executive session from August sixth, twenty twenty. We have the enrollment report from August first, twenty twenty. The school bus report, I'm sorry, the school police report from July first, twenty twenty. The school bus inspection reports from August first, twenty twenty. And the residency slash truancy report from August first, twenty twenty. I need a motion to pull any of these items out or approve as read.
Motion to approve as read.
Motion approved by Mrs. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernardo and Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I have it six to zero. Thank you. Next is the report of the executive session meeting. Item number A, report out on the meeting for August thirteenth, twenty twenty. I can tell the public that there were no votes taken during the executive session. And I need a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? I have it six to zero. Next is the superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I have a few things that I would like to share with all of you. As you all know, a lot is happening with the start of the school year. I'm sure that you've all heard by now that we are going to be delaying the start of school for two weeks. Teachers will be reporting to work on September ninth and students will be reporting to school on September fourteenth. And as you have all heard, a five-point metric system will be used to determine which option that we will be implementing as a school system. And it's my understanding that because each school district will be using these five metrics, those metrics may be different for different communities based on a number of issues, including the number of positive tests, the percentage of the population that tests positive, and other things like operations readiness, facilities readiness. So there are a number of metrics being used to consider what each individual district will determine what option we use. And unfortunately, for all of us that are hoping to really start to solidify our planning, we're not going to hear until the thirty-first as to which option we're going to be implementing. So a little frustration there that it's gonna, that, that we were hoping to initially hear on the seventeenth. And because the start of school got pushed back two weeks, that seven, August seventeenth date got pushed back two weeks as well. So more information to follow. And I know that members of the community are anxious to, you know, have some questions answered and to hear from school staff. We are holding a, a virtual town hall on Monday evening at six o'clock. We have been working to develop that plan. And we're going to be, we actually, you know, had it pretty much developed by the end of the day today, but we will be getting information out to everyone tomorrow. And one of the things that I wanted to let everybody know, there are actually two things. One is that we have created an FAQ document that is based on many of the questions that we have been hearing from students, staff and families. And that will, we'll be sending that out simultaneously with this invitation and information about this virtual town hall. It, we will also provide an opportunity for anyone to ask questions. And we're, we're asking everyone to, you know, please, you know, submit only two. I, I have to believe that many of the questions that, you know, folks will have, will be answered with the FAQ. And we'll, in that meeting, make every attempt to answer all of the questions that we can. And if we cannot answer all of the questions on Monday night, we will continue to add to that FAQ document. We expect that that will be fluid, just like everything else under the current circumstances. So that will be an opportunity for the public to hear from all of us who have been working so hard over the summer to plan for the reopening of school.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, that, the time for that meeting on Monday will be?
Six o'clock, six o'clock, and it will be a Zoom and that information, it will go out with the invitation tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. I just wanted to also give an update on, you know, you know, the kindergarten registration. As you know, we're using a new process to register students. And as of this date, we're using our Aspen Student Management System to register students. And as of today, there are three hundred six kindergarten students registered. You know, we always have some at the last minute. I also, you know, am thinking that there are some families that are unsure under the circumstances as to whether or not they're going to send those little ones to school. And, and you may recall that we have been using a new format to, you know, bring the kindergartners and their families into the school system. And we've been using what is called a soft start. So we've been bringing them in a little bit a couple of days later. And I know that our elementary administrators and kindergarten teachers, and I saw, for example, I, I saw that Lori Senna, one of our kindergarten teachers is on the call. I know that she has been working with her colleagues and with the administrators and developing a, a plan. As you can imagine, you know, these little ones coming to school for the first time. And, and if, you know, we're, we're in a situation where we're doing a lot of things virtually, we really have to think about the best way to initiate them into the school system. And, you know, there's concern about, you know, adults wearing masks and, and all of those kinds of things. So their plans have been developed, but we are under the circumstances, since school has been delayed for a couple of weeks, we need a little more time to think about, you know, how we want to bring the kindergartners in. And, you know, we can have a little bit more information for you. You know, within the next couple of weeks. But I just wanted to share with you the number of students that have registered up to this point. And as you can imagine, you know, one of the things that I've heard from lots and lots of parents, and I'm sure you all have as well, you know, the, it, it's not that easy to do any sort of virtual learning with five-year-olds or six-year-olds or, you know, it's really hard pre-K to two. So, you know, these teachers are really sensitive to that and they, they're, you know, I, I think really, you know, good at, you know, the, you know, thinking about ways to, you know, make the children and families comfortable with starting school because it's a huge step, as we know, for, for children. The only, the only other thing that I wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, is the tremendous support that we have been receiving from Mayor Mutter and, you know, and his leadership and getting the highway department to help us with, you know, specifically Ashton, he's also helping us with a community. I called him within the last couple of weeks and said, Mayor, you know, we have a plan to improve the traffic flow at Ashton Elementary School because as you all know, we're expecting that more parents are going to be driving their students to school and picking them up at the end of every day under the circumstances. In fact, we've been asking them for their help with that. And Mrs. Carbonic met with Officer Bannister, the safety officer for the police department, and they came up with this plan to improve a traffic flow, which required another area of egress and contacted the mayor and he was there the next day, got the highway department in there the next day. And within like a week or so, we have this beautifully paved exit for Ashton School. And I know that he has been working with Mrs. Vaughn at Community School and they have developed a plan that they are working on there. So I just, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the highway department and Chief DeMarison, Officer Bannister for their quick response and support during this challenging time. It really looks nice if you haven't had a chance to get over there to see what they've done at Ashton. The thing that's amazing to me is how quickly they were able to get, get that work done. So I, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Do you have a question for Mr. Mitchell, Mrs. Friedman?
I do. So, Mr. Mitchell, I'm not sure if you can clarify this or not from the state, but in terms of the school reopening plan, we know that there are five metrics. And as I look at the five, there's, you know, number one is the statewide readiness. Are, are we at phase three or higher, which we are. Two, municipal readiness is the town of Cumberland. You know, our incident rate's low and they are. Three is testing readiness, which is also back to the state. Can they test and get them in forty-eight to seventy-two hours? That seems to be the, you know, kind of the, the missing link right now. And that's what the governor's working on. You know, and potentially by, you know, August thirty-first, she'll have that in place. Fourth is supply readiness, which is does the Cumberland schools have the supplies they need, which I believe the answer is yes to that. And then the fifth one, the fifth one is operational readiness. Do we have plans in place to open schools or a variety of plans? And the answer to that is yes. So if on August thirty-first, the governor says, we've got the testing, that's the only one right now that's up in the air a little bit. Is the state going to tell us how we have, which one of our plans we are enacting or are we deciding which one of our plans we're enacting? Now, I know what Warwick did. I'm not certain that that was what was supposed to be done, but what is your interpretation of what happens on August thirty-first?
Well, that is a great question. And as you know, Mrs. Friedman, we, we have regular meetings as superintendents. And, and that question came up on Tuesday, like, you know, who will ultimately decide what option we will be required to implement? And, 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 you know, not to, you know, put Deputy Commissioner Anna Riley on the spot, but she was asked that question and really did not have a real firm answer. But I can tell you what I think and, and what we have been told up to this point. We have been told that it will be the Rhode Island Department of Health that will be playing a key role in which option we implement. I know that the governor is going to be, I'm pretty sure that the governor is going to be, you know, involved in that decision-making. So you know, I, I, and, and, and then on the same token, it seems like when we ask the difficult questions, and I'm not saying this to, you know, point fingers. I think a lot of times, you know, the answer is, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the school department. So I know that I'm not really answering your question, but we really haven't gotten, received a real clear answer to the question. I can tell you that based, you know, and I, and I'm sure you have come, sort of come to this conclusion as well, that you know, the governor really wants elementary pre-K to five to come to school every day. So that, that is, I think, the ultimate goal. And then, you know, I would not be surprised, and I'm not, you know, saying that this is what's going to happen, but I would not be surprised if, you know, middle and high school are on some sort of a hybrid. You know, plan. So, so I, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and that would be, I, I, I think what you're saying is that that would be our decision. So if all five factors are passed and the Department of Health says, yes, Cumberland, you can open, then it is up to us to decide which plan we are enacting.
I, I think that would be an assumption at this point. I, I don't know that it's, I'm not trying to dodge the question. I'm just not real sure as to exactly what we're going to be asked to do.
Okay. And I know that we sent out the survey of just to gauge parents, their families that may choose to keep their student, their kids home, regardless of whether the schools are open or not. And that number is pretty high.
It's right now, right now about fifty-fifty.
So there's also, I guess, you know, a lot of, a lot of variables to this that if, if half of our, of the people who responded, but it was a pretty high number, if half of them chose to keep their kids home, no matter what, then that means we have fewer students who would be going into the building,
Right.
which means the, you know, the spacing and the busing and all of that stuff is something easier to manage. But when will we be asking parents to make a, to make that decision about keeping their students home? We said until, you know, January second or whatever that was.
We, we have been having conversations about when we're going to be asking parents to make that ultimate decision. And it, it really has to be, you know, within the next, I, I can't imagine that it would be more than a week or so because we need that information to appropriately plan for both in school and out of school. But we are going to be sending out a document that asks parents to, you know, make a definitive decision about what they're going to, to do. So as soon as we have that information, then we can really start to figure out how we're going to educate both the students that are home and the students that come to school every day. And we are asking them to make that commitment until the first of the year. And we'll assess at that point and have a better idea of where we are regarding this pandemic.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. I'm glad you asked.
Mrs. Friedman, just, just to piggyback on that, on our last executive session meeting, we did get legal advice from the, Mr. Adams in regards to what the school committee could and couldn't do with the recommendation from RIDE. So ultimately, whatever's best for Cumberland will be the best plan we put out there, regardless of what RIDE may suggest to us. So we have that advice that we can deal with going forward. Because it seems the governor's plan changes every Wednesday when she comes on the screen. Okay. Anyone else have any questions to the superintendent? Okay. I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I'll move forward. Next is reports of standing committees. We have payment of the bills. Pitch hitting for Mr. Salvatore tonight. So we have payment of invoices for the fiscal year nineteen twenty in the amount of three hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. It passed in fiscal on the two to zero vote. Need a motion to pay that set of invoices? Anyone?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Fiorello.
Collins.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Collins. Okay. I'm sorry. Second by?
Second.
All right. Help me out here. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it six to zero with Mr. Salvatore absent. Next set of invoices for the twenty twenty-one year. It's in the amount of one million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and forty-two cents. I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Collins. Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I have it six to zero again with Mr. Fiorello. I'm sorry, Mr. Salvatore being absent. All right. Next is fiscal management and subcommittee update. The fiscal subcommittee did meet tonight and we had a couple of items on the agenda. First is, is in fiscal, we approved on the two, zero vote to have a company come in and assess the ventilation systems throughout the school district, which we will be talking about later on under new business. The second is we had a company, we actually have a contract already with, with Connecticut Business Solutions of Warwick for photocopies and they have made an offer to the school department to end the lease that we have with them and do another one at a lower amount. So that kind of works out for the school district as well. So we did talk about that. And finally, Mr. Pregano gave the school members that were present an idea in regards to budget adjustments with full return and without full return for us to have enough files momentarily as we plan going forward where it would cost the school district. And that was the extent of the fiscal management subcommittee update. So next is the policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, we did not meet this past week. There is policy work being done, but quite honestly, with everything else going on, I have not felt it was necessary to add to the workload of the administration. So, but however, we do have the second vote for the G-ten staff hiring policy under new business.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Next is the achievement and communication subcommittee update. Mrs. Friedman?
Yeah, same as Mr. Fiorello. We haven't met and the assistant superintendent in his office have had their hands busy with everything else right now.
Right. I understand that one. All right. And finally, we have the district health and wellness subcommittee update. Mrs. Bernardo?
Thank you. Yes, we're in the same situation at this point. We're kind of pending on a good time to, to hold the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So next is comments from the public. If you wish to be speak, address the school committee, please make yourself known to Mr. Chandler so that we can start to make a list. And the policy of a school committee is roughly three minutes for comments. And please state your name and address for the record when you're called upon. So they have that information. So, Mr. Chandler, could you announce what they have to do to make themselves known?
Yep. So if anybody would like to speak, they can use star nine to raise their hand. We can allow you to speak. Or if you are currently muted on the phone, you can use star, I mean, yeah, star six, I'm sorry.
Star six. So, Mr. Chandler, is there anyone making themselves known at this time? They would like to make a comment?
Yes, we have one K. Smith that would like to say something.
K. Smith? Okay, that's fine. Hello? Can you hear us? You're muted right there. You go. So you're not, you're unmuted yourself. So if you would, please state your name and address for the record, please. Hello?
They're unmuted. I did not hear anything yet though.
Okay. I, I see that as well. Okay. Well, let's move to the second one. If there's a second one and give her a check a second. Maybe she's having a, you know, you know, issues with the computer laptop. Is there anyone else, Mr. Chandler?
Nope, not at this time. And K. Smith just logged off.
She just logged off. Okay. All right. Well, there is another opportunity for the take comments from the public. So we'll move on. And if anyone wants to speak, they'll have another chance. All right. So next we have a public hearing. The reading of the new policy, second reading of the G-ten staff hiring. Mr. Fiorello, you want to take that or would you read that into the record?
Yes, I would like this to be read into the record for the second reading and we will have the vote on it a little bit later. Just to remind everyone, this is the policy that will move us in the direction of being compliant with the new site-based management regulations that were put in place.
Right. I understand. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about this new policy? This really takes away the hiring from the school committee and leaves it in the hands of the administration and principals at buildings and so forth. So we have to adopt this by April of twenty twenty-one anyways. It becomes law, permanent law. So we've been updating our policies. Is there anyone that would like to speak about this? Please make yourself known. Anyone, Mr. Chandler?
No. Oh, one just popped in. K. Smith again.
K. Smith, are you out there?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I apologize for that. For some reason, it wasn't working. This is Carrie Smith from one three three Bear Hill Road. And I actually, if I could, I wanted to go back and ask my question. And that is for the Monday meeting that will occur for the public. Will a deck or presentation or information be provided beforehand so that the public can look it over and then submit their questions?
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, can you answer that for her?
Yeah, well, we'll, you know, be working on that. I mean, it is, not to make any excuses, it is a little crazy right now, but we plan to do some work on that tomorrow. So we'll do what we can to make it available as soon as possible before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think, Mr. Mitchell, the FAQs
Yes.
will likely go out before the meeting. And I think that will
Yeah, I'm glad.
that will have a lot of information in it for them.
Yes. Mrs. Smith, the, with, with the invitation, there is an FAQ document that answers, you know, a, a lot of the questions that we've been hearing. So that may, that may be a helpful tool for you, but we'll do the best that we can to get this done before so that folks would have some time to, to look at it.
That would be great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we have public comments still in regards to the G-ten staff hiring. Anyone from the public that want to speak about this? Hearing none, okay, we'll move forward. It's, let's make it known that the reading of the new policy, the second reading, is now official. Thank you. All right, so we now go to new business. We have discussion, the indoor vote to approve an MOA for the ITSKI collective bargaining agreement extension. Anyone who want to take this one? No? So what we have is a, unless they want to take it, we have a
Paul, I can take it if you want.
Yeah.
So simply, the XC unit, their contract's up for, it's set to expire. We've been negotiating, Mrs. Dunkinson and Mr. Mitchell and I, along with the XC unit, have been negotiating to extend the contract. And both sides are in agreement that we should extend the contract. There were a couple stipulations, but they're looking at, we've been able to negotiate with them and come to an agreement, hopefully next year, a year from now, we'll be in a better position. The climate will be better, basically. This is not a good time to be negotiating anything. So we're poised now to vote on the agreement, so.
Anyone else have any comments or questions in regards to it? All right, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the ITSKI unit, and it's a one-year extension, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Motion approved?
Motion approved by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Friedman and Mrs. Waters, I hear it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed, Mr. Demartica is opposed. So it passes on a five to one vote with Mr. Salvatore being absent. Okay, thank you. All right, next is discussion, the indoor vote to approve non-certified layoffs. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we have nine non-certified layoffs. And I need a motion to approve the non-certified layoffs.
Can you all make a motion to approve it? I didn't know if Mrs. Dunkinson wanted to add anything to that.
No.
Okay, so Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the non-certified layoffs, second by?
Second with the second.
By Mr. Collins, and did you say you had a question, Mr. Collins?
Yes, just for clarification, these positions were already voted on, the layoffs are already voted on, these are not new layoffs, correct?
This was like cuts back in May.
All right, so this is a continuation, but this is the finalization of that layoff list, so these are not, you know, because whenever people hear layoffs, like, oh my god, more layoffs.
The job pool was delayed because of the uncertainty, and so that took place last week, and so we were able to identify those affected.
Okay, so I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero with Mr. Salvatore absent. Next is discussion, the indoor vote on indemnity agreement with entity owning three ten Broad Street in connection with school drop-off and pickup at the BF Norton School. For the public, we're still working on some language, but the owner of the property, which is Cole's, graciously is going to allow the parents of BF to use that area for a drop-off, because we expect more parents to be driving children to school. And we're just working on an agreement with them for liability. And it's greatly appreciated that the business owner stepped up, so I need a motion to approve the, well, Mr. Adams, do we have an indemnity agreement yet?
So I would just ask that the committee approve that that an indemnity agreement be drafted and that I be charged with that responsibility of drafting it and also ensuring that, to the extent there is coverage available, insurance coverage available to the committee for the parking lot of BF Norton, that that coverage be extended here, that that's the proviso for this.
Okay, so we need approval for Mr. Adams to draw up this indemnity agreement. Mr. Fiorello, you have a question?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to point out that I'd just like to thank the BF principal, Sandy LaRivie, for getting this ball rolling. She's the one that made the initial call and made the request. So it's due to her ingenuity, really, that we're going to have that space. What the space will be used for will probably be determined later. That all being said, I will make a motion to request Mr. Adams to draw up the agreement on the basis of also working out everything with the trust. Anything else I need to add, Mr. Adams?
That was meticulous, Mr. Fiorello.
Thank you. I need a second for this one.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Collins, Mrs. Waters, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Again, thank you to the owner and the school principal for, you know, helping us out. All right, next is discussion, the indoor vote to approve some resolutions. We have, let me get this first one in my hand. We have a resolution, SCPR eight twenty twenty. It's a contract for inspection and assessment of school building ventilation systems throughout the school district. It is with a company, ENE Systems of Canton, Mass., which is very familiar with all our school systems. They're going to go in and do air quality testing, et cetera, and get it back to us as soon as possible. It's hoped they get it back before we have to make a decision on opening schools. But like anything else, they have an issue getting some of the equipment, like people had to get masks. But they got, as soon as they can get in, they're going to start testing our school classrooms, cafeterias and stuff like that for ventilation, to make sure they, they, they meet the requirement for us to open school adequately and safely for our children. So the amount is forty thousand dollars, and it's going to be paid with funds from the COVID-nineteen relief fund. And it passed upstairs on a two to zero vote. I need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Mrs. Bernato.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
I just think this is, this is really important. With all the things we're planning for PPE, but we don't consider, like, just think how some of the buildings, especially the older schools, the kids cramped in, how stagnant it can be, especially late August, early September. I think this is a really important study, so they did, the company did say earlier that they think they can get it done. They anticipate being able to get it done before the anticipated September fourteenth start date, so we should have a good, a pretty good idea of what our air quality is and what our ability is. So hopefully, parents and, you know, parents in particular, and teachers, obviously, should feel safe going, at least in that regard, that the circulation, the ventilation has been checked and has been assessed and corrected where necessary.
Mrs. Friedman, you were next. Are you all set?
No, I just wanted to, you know, read from the CDC guidelines on this, that says, if there is no to minimal community transmission, and I believe Cumberland is in the minimal community transmission. It says, you know, reinforcing everyday preventative actions, ensuring proper ventilation within school facilities, including buses, and maintaining cleaning and disinfection practices remain important. So we're, we're talking about making sure that our ventilation is proper. There isn't any actual evidence or clear guidelines of above and beyond kind of ventilation that you need to do around COVID, so this is to make sure that our schools, and this would be, I'd say, regardless of whether it's COVID nineteen or not, that our schools have proper ventilation. But it says, you know, along with everything else that we're doing, wearing masks and social distancing and cleaning and disinfection, this is just, of course, a good thing that should be done anyways.
I agree a hundred percent, it's long overdue, and maybe we need to look at our plans we have for the elementary schools going forward with the remodeling and so forth to maybe incorporate some other things in there that we necessarily didn't think about going forward, so. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. I need a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it six to zero, thank you. All right, next is SCPR eight twenty twenty dash fourteen, resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to execute a lease purchase from Connecticut Business Solutions of Warwick, Rhode Island, for eleven copies in an amount not to exceed three hundred nineteen thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. That passed upstairs on a three to zero vote. And what this is, is we'll be entering into a new contract with CBS. And we have approximately sixteen months left on the current contract. And they are going to toss that away, do a new contract, which will, which will lower the amount the monthly payment that we pay these guys. We're not going to be writing a check for three hundred nineteen thousand. We do that monthly over three years, which will save the district some money and replace, you know, machines that have two, three million copies on it, four million copies that need a lot of service, so it's a good deal for the school district where we get, you know, good machines in for the public. Like I say, it did pass two to zero on a vote upstairs. Need a motion to approve? Motion by, yes?
It's a five-year contract, I believe.
Oh. Well, Mr.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Hold on, Mr. Prignano, you out there?
It's, it's sixty months.
Sixty months, so it's a five-year contract, that, that payment will be spread out over five years. So I need a mo, Mr. Fiorello, you make a motion? Second by?
Right, so it's like sixty, it's like sixty, it's like sixty thousand a year, not three hundred nineteen in one year.
Right, exactly. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you, passes six to zero, thank you. All right, next is discussion, the indoor vote on the, it's a second reading and final approval for the new G-ten staff hiring. Mr. Fiorello, you just want to take that, or Mrs. Dunkinson?
I'll just say that this policy is back for its second reading, to be finally approved. I don't know if Mrs. Dunkinson wants to add anything to that, but this policy is ready to go, and it brings us in line with site-based management, which I think is a
Right. Okay, so I need a motion.
To approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any further discussion? I would just like to say that this does take the hiring of, you know, for personnel going forward, it takes it out of the school committee hands, and that is being left to the administration to hire and do with that, so there'll be no recommendations from the school committee in regards to this now going forward, which the state has taken that away from us anyway, so. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it six to zero. Coming out, coming in loud now. All right, so we have, next item on the agenda is the personal recommendations. Mrs. Dunkinson, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Tonight, I have two leave of absence recommendations for you. I would like to request, would you like them both together or separate?
Well, since they're certified and non-certified, I would take them separately.
Okay, I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the unpaid leave of Brooke Finder, paraprofessional at BF Norton School for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, I need a motion? Motion approved? Motion to approve by Mr. Collins?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman and Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes pass six to zero, thank you. Next is the non-certified?
This is the certified.
Certified, okay.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee for the unpaid leave of Leah Hogan, PEAPE teacher, point five FTE at Ashton School for the twenty twenty-one school year.
All right, I need a motion?
Motion approved?
Motion approved by Mr. Collins?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Eyes have it six to zero. So next is, next is the comments from the public again, if anyone wants to make a comment to the school committee, we have a three minutes, so timeframe, and I need your name and address for the record, please make yourself known to Mr. Chandler, because I cannot see everybody on my screen, you know, waving or anything, so if you have a comment, please make yourself known to Mr. Chandler.
Nothing at this point.
Nothing at this point, okay. All right, hearing no one's raising their hand, we'll move on to school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone have a comment to Mr. Collins, go right ahead?
All right, today is August thirteenth. Five months ago today, to put things in perspective, was the last day Cumberland students were in the building. So I don't know why I thought of that, so hopefully, five months from now, January thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, we're not in this situation, but it's been a long five months, and I know teachers are anxious and students are anxious and parents, and hopefully, we can get these kids back in some capacity, if not full capacity, it's, I'm kind of sick of this, to be quite honest, I know all of you are, and if anybody is enjoying this, then you're crazy, so. And there are people probably loving it, you know what I mean? People don't like agoraphobics or whatever, but yeah, I'm not really having fun anymore, so.
Anyone else have a comment or anything? Again, I'd just like to, you know, read here what Mr. Mitchell had said, thank you, the mayor, Motta, and Frank Stark in the highway department for moving quickly to help us out at Ashton Community School, and I'm sure they'll, you know, they'll be called on again to help us out to get our schools ready, so if we're bringing the children back, we'll be ready to go, and I appreciate the fact that we're able to work with the mayor and the highway department very quickly to, to put things in place. So, anyone else, Mr. Fiorello?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about the reopening. I want to thank Mrs. LaRivie, Mrs. Carter, and Dr. Masterson. I visited BF Norton Garvin and McCourt Schools yesterday to see what preparations are being made, and also just to discuss the situation with the administration and some of the staff that happened to be there. Everyone is working extremely hard, I know central administration, every building, everyone's working so hard, and it's appreciated, but that all being said, the ventilation study that's being done, I think, is very, very important to our plan for reopening. We know that the air quality in some of these buildings is poor. Some of these buildings, parts of them are almost a hundred years old. Others are fifty years old. The state has not made the investment over the last, what, twenty, thirty, forty years in our school buildings, and we're in the condition that we are now. And the Department of Health sets standards for restaurants and offices, but then cuts those restrictions in half so that we can pile kids into a classroom. I have some very real concerns about being able to reopen safely. And hopefully, a couple more weeks will make everything much clearer to us. But I, for one, do not plan on letting the governor dictate to me how we open up schools. I believe that it is under Rhode Island general law that provides the school committee with that power of ensuring the safety of students and staff, and I think it's something that we should not give up, and that is all I have to say.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Fiorello, what's best for Cumberland, so, anyone else? All right, hearing none, I need to ask if we have anything to go into executive sessions, Mr. Mitchell?
No, we do not, no, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great. All right, so I need a motion to adjourn?
What should we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Waters, second by Mr. Collins. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it six to zero, thank you very much, everyone. The eyes have it six to zero. Thank you very much, everyone, and if we need to call another special meeting, you know, we'll do it. Uh, we do have a meeting Monday night to, you know, hopefully answer the questions for the parents as well out there and um. We'll just keep on struggling along. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, everybody.